Okay, all right. Good morning, everyone. This, the Board of Commissioners Fiscal Year 2526 Budget Workshop for May 21st, 2025 is hereby called to order. And we are here for a discussion of the recommended budget. And Andy, are we gonna start with you?
Sure. All right, well, thank you for the opportunity to hold the workshop to discuss the recommended budget. This is sort of our agenda for today. I think there are certain aspects of this that are gonna require more time than others. I was able to send, we were able to send the board a copy of this presentation last night. Now, there are certain aspects of this that you wanted a little bit of time to think about. So this is just a recap of where we are. We had several workshops ahead of presenting the recommended budget. We presented the recommended budget on May 7th at the last meeting. We're at the workshop today. And then we have the public hearing scheduled on June 11th. And then we also have the recommended budget and the CIP published on our website. And we've been putting that out to the public. I'm sure you saw the article in the Outer Banks Voice, which summarized all the local budgets. One interesting aspect of this budget is that we had to prepare it with not perfect information. We never have perfect information, but we did learn some things after we presented the budget about some of the other local budgets. And unfortunately, a lot of, a lot of what we do is intertwined with the county and the other towns with respect to a lot of the revenue we receive. And so I think that's a lot of what we're gonna end up talking about today. So just as a recap, you know, obviously, this year was a big year for us in terms of the revaluation. The county completed that. They issued the new values, the notices back in March. We had a 59% property value increase in the town. And you can see the overall value there on the screen. You know, we're upwards of $5 billion in value as a town. The tax rate that we had from last year, 33 cents per $100 of assessed value. And we ended up calculating the revenue neutral rate at 20.87 cents. And then the recommended budget had a 22 cent tax rate. And so that represents 1.13 cents above revenue neutral. During the presentation last month, we covered the reasons why we were recommending that. And I don't, I don't necessarily want to recap all that. That was in the budget and the message. So a lot of it had to do with our revenue and what, what we're expecting. You know, we did over-budget revenue, shared revenue in FY '25. And so we're, we're recovering from that. We're, we're sort of rethinking how we're gonna budget that for the coming year. We've reduced our shared revenue budget down to $10.517 million, which is less than we expect to receive this year. And then moving forward, you know, we were sort of keeping that relatively flat. In FY '27, in the plan year of our budget, we were projecting about $10.6 million, which is only slightly above what we were budgeting for FY '26. So where the rub comes in is that we don't think we're gonna get that in, in the plan year now. And this is the reason why. So these are the tax, proposed tax rates or increases from the other towns. And at the time of presenting the budget a few weeks ago, we were not aware of a substantial tax increase proposed in Killable Hills and also in Manio. And so this is the actual revenue neutral rates that were calculated for all the towns in the county. Included is the manager's recommended tax rate and then the, the proposed tax increase. So that's sort of the breakdown. And Nags Head, the recommended rate from the published budget was 22 cents. And you can see where we fall with respect to the other towns. We were right there with Kitty Hawk. Mania was at 30 cents. Killable Hills was at 28 cents. Southern Shores and Duck were at 18. And historically, they've always been lower than the rest of the towns. So getting into shared revenues, since Killable Hills has proposed such a large tax increase that will affect what we think we'll receive in FY '27. This is just sort of shared revenue 101 for, for everyone's information. You know, it includes occupancy, sales, and land transfer tax. Obviously, it's a lot of what we get in addition to property tax. It's distributed according to the size of each town's levy. So the larger your levy percentages with respect to the other towns, the more money in shared revenue you receive. So obviously, when the other towns raise taxes, it affects what we get in terms of shared revenue. And the shared revenue la- lags one year behind the changes to the levy. So if the levy changes this year, that, the distribution doesn't change till the following year. That's why we're talking about FY '27 in terms of how we're, how we're affected. Would not affect us next year, would affect us the following year. So in light of what we've learned since the last meeting, we now expect to lose about $420,000 in shared revenue because of the substantial tax increases from the other towns. And I, I can't really recall a time where countywide, I've, we've seen this all at once. There were some pretty big fluctuations when everybody was starting beach nourishment projects, but it's sort of surprising. We were, we're trying to find out the reasons why. I mean, I think Killable Hills obviously has to pay debt service on the new fire station. And I think that accounts for about two cents of what they were doing. But anyway, the, the plan year that we showed on that, that slide, the graph of shared revenues, we were projecting about $10.6 million in shared revenue, and now that's down to $10.18 million. So when we talk about that, one of the things we wanted to really talk to the board today about was, you know, do we make that up? Do we try to make that up? You know, we, we think that it's important to consider not falling behind with respect to shared revenue. Obviously, we want to propose a tax rate that meets our needs, but it, it is a consideration when we would potentially lose revenue because of the distribution. In the recommended budget, we had 1.13 cents for FY '26. And we also included a, a one-cent tax increase in the plan year. One option would be, if we wanted to try to make up the shared revenue, would be to move that one-cent increase from '27 to '26. And so the 1.13 cent increase would jump to 2.13 cent. And Amy's calculated what we think we would lose if we did that. And it would, it would go from about 420 to about 100,000. So much less, much more digestible. It would be slightly less than what we were projecting to receive this year. We were projecting to receive 10.517 in FY '26. And that would drop it to 10.5, I believe. So effectively, if, if the board decided, okay, we want to go in this direction, that would be a 2.13 cent tax increase for FY '26. And then the proposed tax rate would move from 22 cents to 23 cents. Another thing to consider would be to adopt a tax rate that preserves the shared revenue with respect to what we showed in the financial plan. So doing what we would need to get it to 10.6 million. And that would be 2.33 cents. And that would end up being a 23.2 cent tax rate. Obviously, we have to tell the board what we would use the additional revenue for. You know, adding another penny or more in this year. You know, we haven't included expenditures in the budget for that. We do have a fund balance appropriation in there to balance the budget of $400,000. And so we could certainly reduce that. And that would help us, and Amy could explain why. We could also add some additional capacity to our capital investment fund to fund future capital projects. Certainly, it would help us if we have any economic downturn with respect to shared revenues. We could continue a more aggressive CIP like we have been doing. Another consideration is we could add a half a cent to beach nourishment. So as you know, next budget year, FY '27, we're likely gonna be considering how to fund the next beach nourishment project. And with this proposed budget, we were taking our townwide beach nourishment rate to one, one and a half cents. And I think that generates about $750,000. You know, right now, that's about what we generate. We, we generate a little bit more than that with the townwide rate. It's likely with the next project that we would have to increase the townwide rate as, as well as the MSD rates to pay for the project. So one consideration would be to add, add a half a cent now to the townwide rate. And the hope would be that we wouldn't have to increase it much more than that when we go to look at our rates next year for our project. That would bring, the townwide beach nourishment tax would generate about a million dollars. So adding about a couple hundred thousand dollars to what that generates each year. So since that's something we're likely gonna have to consider anyway, it would be a, a good use of the funds. So I think we'll probably pause there and maybe have some discussion.
I would like to hear from Amy about the appropriation from the fund balance and maybe why we would prefer not to do that.
Sure. So the fun, the fund balance appropriation, I, like we had talked about in a couple other workshops ahead, whatever you appropriate for the next fiscal year, that comes off of your fund balance for the fiscal year '25 books. And so we had 400,000 budgeted this fiscal year. So if we don't, if we keep it at 400,000, that's not gonna impact our fund balance. But if we reduce it, then we can add that much back to our fund balance, which can help us make up for the shared revenue loss. So if we add more to our, if we appropriate more fund balance, then that's gonna hit our fund balance and reduce it. It just comes, it just has to, whatever you appropriate has to come off the top. And like I said, because we already have 400,000 appropriated, nothing will change. So anything we, if we lower it, that will help us. And if we increase it, that will make it worse.
Andy, so in the discussion about what we would do next year for beach nourishment, we have the townwide beach nourishment tax.
Correct.
You were suggesting that we go ahead and increase that?
Well, if we, if we increased, if we moved the penny from FY '27 to '26, we could dedicate half of that penny to beach nourishment. And that, you know, that would be a way, because right now, that penny, we, in our budget, we don't have expenditures dedicated to that penny.
Right.
And so we would have to figure out what to do with that money. Obviously, you don't have to spend it.
Right.
That'd be the first thing.
Right.
But, you know, if we added a half a penny to beach nourishment, that's likely something we're gonna end up having to do anyway.
Okay.
And so, you know, just my thinking from a board member's perspective, you know, it's a good use of the funds. It's likely something that's gonna have to happen would offset something you have to do in the future.
Okay, all right. So it helps us not to have to...
Right. And, and we're gonna dig into that a lot more next year, but the hope would be that you only make a minor adjustment to that, but you, you know, the rest of the adjustments would be to the MSDs.
I just, I asked that question because it felt a little bit like, trying to keep, in my head, trying to keep the discussion kind of clean about what we're doing this year and why. Not mixing apples and oranges to, to some degree, you know.
Okay.
And that's what, so thank you for that. I think, I think that helps. You know, I, I wouldn't, in my, my own thinking about this, and I'll just, I'll go ahead and say this now. I know we have a lot more discussion to, to come, is that, you know, I have to trust that other boards are doing what they have to do in their towns in order to do their business, just like we would. I mean, you, you know, this board makes its decisions in, in the town's best interest. And, and we don't charge more than we have to. We don't ask the citizens for more than we have to. And I, I trust that the other boards are doing that. And it just happens to have this impact on our shared revenue. I just, when I, when I think about the shared revenue aspect and, and a tax increase in order to, to leverage the shared revenue, in, in my mind, it's hard to say to the citizens, we had an opportunity to have occupancy tax and meal tax helped pay for some of what the town does. And we, we sort of passed it up, you know, because we, because we were locked into our thinking about the tax rate. And I, I don't, that's not proven. I mean, it's just, you know, in my mind, that's just not, that's not good business. We're, you know, missing that opportunity that we have to get that money that's generated by tourism. Essentially, most of it. I mean, we do pay, some of us do pay. You know, we pay some meal tax and we pay some transfer tax. But for the most part, that's paid by the visitors and we, we shouldn't pass it up.
Questions, anybody, so far?
I think the whole discussion comes back to how we do our taxes and the shared revenue versus other towns and other areas. And the fact that if we start losing shared revenue, the taxes will go up.
Yes.
There's no other way about it. So I mean,
True.
It's whether you increase it a penny now, you know, they, Killable Hills forced you to do it. It's not. I mean, they're basically grabbing that shared revenue by every penny they, they add on to it. So if you don't look at it with some respects to where you're gonna be in three years over shared revenue, because if they hit you next year for another penny, or whatever, you just go further and further.
You dig a hole. I mean, you're, you're digging.
And, and that's the same reason, you know, Manio puts it on there, and they had to. Originally, this discussion started with them and, and increasing their shared revenue. So you need that money from someplace, and either you ask for your citizens to cough it up, or you go get it from the tourist and what makes this area what it is.
I think it, what, it sounds like we can either be proactive or reactive. And reactive is gonna cost our citizens more in the long run.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I gotta agree with you guys. I mean, I just feel like, you know, at the beginning of this year, we were looking to not raise our taxes at all, but I think we've kind of got our hand forced here by the other towns.
Yeah, well, and I, and I asked the, the manager for the overall rates, because we still are. You know, we benchmark ourselves in terms of service, I think, against Killable Hills to a great degree. And we are, we would still be significantly, you know, significantly less burdened on our citizens than that. And I think that's important. We, again, we have future plans, but I think that that's, that's important to consider too.
You know, I mean, obviously, every town's different, and we have different things we do.
Yeah.
You know, historically, Duck and Southern Shores have had lower rates, and their property values are different. And they have different responsibilities. Duck, for instance, doesn't have any of their own streets. You know, so they don't, they have less maintenance for some of their infrastructure, and they don't have a water system. Although taxes is not water. You know, still, though, you, when you talk about streets, you talk about drainage. And what we've been talking about a lot for the last few years, streets and drainage.
Yep.
And also, they don't provide sanitation services. But they do, they do contract for that service. So that is an expense for them, but like I said, every, every town's different. And their MSD rates are quite a bit different. I mean, I think if you go and look at the MSD rates for their beach nourishment projects, you'll see a big difference.
Do you want to continue, Andy?
So we had another slide here that just kind of talked about if we wanted to not change what was recommended with the tax rate, you know, some of the repercussions of that. That, some of the things we'd have to consider in next year's budget. I don't know how much we really need to go into this at this point, you know. I mean, if the board's not really inclined to, to stick with that, then I think you've kind of already stated this yourselves. So, you know, the, the remaining slides we have just kind of go over what was in the budget, you know. And we'll go through this pretty quickly. Some of this restates what was in the CIP. But, you know, obviously, we're working on a campus master plan, which includes replacing our fitness center and workforce housing here at Town Hall. So the budget includes a debt payment for that, $300,000 roughly. And right now, we included doing that whole project as a single phase. Remember, we talked about maybe breaking it out into two phases, but right now, we're showing you that doing it all as one phase. And I think that project's getting ready to go out to bid here soon.
And I don't know if the board members know that we met with DOT last week. Andy and I met with Tess Judge to ask if DOT might help us with the lakeside traffic signal.
That's right.
Of course.
We, we had an opportunity to meet with her, and, and I know Perry and Police wanted to talk to Killable Hills and the other towns and Tess about an issue they had to some of our traffic lights, you know, throughout the county and the way they function when power goes out.
Right.
But then we, we talked to Tess about some other things that were on our radar. Some of them were our legislative priorities. One of the items was like the corridor study we had talked about for 158. But we talked about the lakeside traffic signal and, and the signal at the event site. And possibly getting some assistance with those things. The budget, Nags Head's budget did include essentially half the cost for the lakeside signal. And so that is in there. You know, we, we already have a debt payment in the budget for the workforce housing that's under construction now at the community care clinic, and then a large debt payment for public services. Personal items, we had the, the merit, performance-based merit structure. We had the health insurance increase and overall costs for health insurance in the budget. We do have a salary study in there, and then the 3% COLA. Back to insurance, you know, the overall cost increase for that was about 455,000. We covered that with the board at a previous workshop. And we talked about some of the IT projects we've got going on. Next year's a big year in terms of IT. We're taking Munis to the cloud, going with their subscription as a service and no longer self-hosting. We're also talking about no longer having our... We're also talking about no longer having our K drive and our storage, uh, here on, on premise. We would go into the cloud with that as well, and not rebuy any hardware for our server room, except for switches and some necessary items. You know, we've got some items in the budget for security, for, uh, security cameras at our different facilities, for our key card system. We have our IT service contract. Planning and Development has several items, uh, in the budget. Obviously, they're, they've been working on digitizing a lot of their records, and this is, I think, would be the, the third year they've done that, and they've been successful at getting that done. And we've also, uh, got arts and culture initiatives, which they presented several months ago on what they plan to do for the year. Those items are in the budget. Police, we've got three police vehicles. Um, we're, we're also making payments for the RMS system, license plate readers, and the, and their cameras for the body and in-car cameras. Fire and Ocean Rescue, you know, we talked about increasing the funding for the part-time pool. I believe about another ten thousand dollars, slightly more than that. Uh, we need to replace a generator at Station sixteen. The replacement schedule had a, a new, uh, truck to replace Deputy Chief's truck. Debt payments on two fire trucks. And we also included the debt payment for the new property we purchased, uh, in that, in that department, because that's the only known expense we've, we've slated for that property. And then we increased our lifeguard pay, and the board did that several months ago. Pedestrian projects, uh, we're showing the sidewalk extension on Admiral Street, connecting, I believe, Wrightsville to the Beach Road. We're doing engineering for the project adjacent to Jockeys Ridge, you know, to connect Hollowell to Soundside Road. And then we've got our annual multi-use path bulkhead and concrete repairs. Uh, we just completed, uh, replacing the multi-use path and resurfacing it from Jeanette's Pier to Dune Street. Uh, we have money to continue that project in the fall to go all the way up to hopefully Curlew Street. And then from there, we, we would have to, future budgets would, would continue to do that all the way to Eighth Street. June Street Beach Access is in the budget for next year. We've got some additional money, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to supplement the project areas twelve and thirteen, just to provide contingency and construction admin. And, and those projects, Project Area twelve is underway, Project Area thirteen. The contract has been signed, the notice of proceed has, has been let, the contractor's working on acquiring, um, materials for that. Uh, the project has not actually started on the ground, but there may be an opportunity to, to start that. Uh, we're talking to DOT about that right now, whether or not any work can occur during the summer that doesn't require lane closures. Tipping fees, those have been adjusted. Um, we have adjusted them downward a little bit to reflect a little bit lower occupancy. However, they are increasing, the cost per ton is increasing, and we are seeing a continued increase in our C and D tonnages. And our bulk, curbside bulk collection in the new bulk yard, we, we continue to see robust usage of the services. The budget has a residential sanitation truck, as well as a knuckle boom truck. The water fund, you know, we had proposed a five percent increase, uh, to water rates, and so this is just the new water rate structure that reflects that. The five percent water rate increase is basically, Amy, would you like to talk about that? In terms of what that does?
Yes, um, I think, I, we actually kind of left this slide from the last presentation just as a refresher, um, to, you know, bring everybody up to speed who maybe this is their first time listening to this. But it'll give us about two hundred thousand dollars, um, give or take, to cover cash flows from operations, which is required by the OGC. It's one of the things they monitor in our financial statement. Essentially, it just helps us keep up with the rising costs. And the last water rate increase we did was in twenty twenty-two. That was not for the public services complex. Um, and it just kind of doesn't, it's not growing our net position. It's just kind of keeping pace with everything again. And again, we had talked about the, um, the study that we're doing, the, the Water Master Plan. That's not complete yet, and so we're not really recommending, um, a change in structure because we're trying to see, you know, where that lands before we, um, have to look at changing anything drastically. So this just kind of helps us keep pace with what things are costing nowadays.
Thanks, Amy.
Yep. And then you, you had that, right?
Yes, so we have the five hundred thousand dollar loan that we received, uh, for zero percent, septic system replacements, zero percent replacements for those. That's in the Water Capital Project Fund. Um, we have thirty thousand dollars budgeted for the septic loans that the town does outside of the zero percent program. The Septic Health Advisory Committee is recommending increasing the pump-out credits from one fifty to two fifty. So we made that assumption in the budget. We're doing engineering, uh, for Gull Street and Eighth Street to convert from the, um, the chlorine conversion. We've, we've got a CIP project to loop water lines from Driftwood Street to the Sports Club along one fifty-eight. Uh, we've got the debt service from Public Services and, and from the water meter project in the budget. As you know, the water fund pays for a portion of that debt service. We've got some funds in, in the budget to do some maintenance on the South Nagseth ditch. You know, we see erosion occurring every year, and a lot of these water lines actually run underneath the ditch. When the ditch banks erode, it exposes some of our infrastructure, so they have to go in and repair the ditch banks. And Public Services has been doing some, some ditch maintenance to, to muck out the ditch. In certain locations, they started doing some of that, uh, this spring. And I think it's helped, and I think they'll continue to do some of that work as well. And then we have an annual water tank and tower maintenance, maintenance contract. That was a ten-year contract we signed. So that's a summary of our budget, and I, I think we talked about the, the main issue that we're dealing with this year earlier. And so happy to have any feedback or discussion from the board on what we might do with our, our tax rates, and anything else that you want to talk about.
One more thing that's relevant to the tax rate. And you pointed it out just during the water discussion, the replacement of water lines. You know, one of the things that our lobbyist has been doing this year is, uh, trying to get the legislature to give us funding for water line replacement. The Senate and the House have both passed their initial budgets. Neither of them included, uh, project cost member allocations. They're going to work that out in conference. We've been told repeatedly that this is going to be a very lean year for those kinds of projects. So we're going to keep, um, but we're going to keep pushing, you, you know, and, and remain somewhat hopeful for getting some of that money. But I, but I think if we think about having at some point to replace those water lines anyway, it's probably another reason we don't want to fall behind here, because if we don't get an allocation for the legislature, we are going to be paying for those water lines at some point ourselves. And, uh, that's going to cost a little money.
You've got a, what was it, twenty-year plan to redo pl- all your stormwater drains and, and pave streets. And if you push that back, then we're right back where we were eight years ago.
Yes, right.
And not having any of that, so, you, you know, it all takes money.
Yep.
And if you're losing money because the other towns are going up.
Yeah.
Andy emphasized the importance of the shared revenue, because, you know, again, most people don't understand that that is the majority of our taxes.
Well, I was looking at that. It's, it's like our property tax is twelve million and some odd, and their share, shared revenue is ten million and some odd dollars. I mean, it's not like, it's not like, I mean, I think probably the average citizen thinks, you know, we're paying the vast majority in the shared revenues, maybe a couple of million dollars or something like that. It is, it is not. It is, it is not quite equal, but it's a lot of money.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, your tax rates would almost double if we didn't have shared revenue.
Right.
Of course, you know, obviously, if we didn't have visitation, we wouldn't need as many services, but, but, you know.
Right, right, but, but the system is built, and the system works, and, and, and we've been under this system for a long time, so, um, I, I don't know. I mean, so I guess my question to the board is, you know, I'm definitely in favor of pulling the one cent forward from next, next year to this one. Do we want, but we're losing about a hundred thousand dollars in shared revenue by doing that? Or do we go the additional fraction of a cent to make sure...
It's additional to, point two.
Point, or do we go to the additional point two to not go backwards at all on shared revenue?
Well, I think to your point, I mean, we've been very fortunate that we've gotten a lot of grant money in the past, and we've done a lot of stuff, stormwater, and a lot of improvements with the grant money that we've had. And now we're already being told that it's going to be a lean year. So, I mean, that kind of puts us behind the eight ball again, along with the other towns raising their taxes, so.
Yeah.
It's a tough one. I know we didn't want to raise them at all, but...
Yeah, yeah.
Like Commissioner Sears' point about going back eight years of stormwater. When you think about that, I mean, we have made so much headway with that, and we do have those water lines coming, but we can't go backwards. And we've made a lot of progress, and that progress could be undone really fast.
I think what I'm hearing then is the one point two instead of just, just the one. And I'm, I completely, totally in agreement, the additional one point two.
Yeah, additional one point two.
So the, so the two points, um...
Two point three-three, I think, is what we said.
Right, yes, so the total of two point three-three.
And that would still put us at the lowest in all the towns on a tax increase still.
Yes.
Yeah, the next one is Duck at two point four-five.
Yeah, yeah. You know, and I...
Haven't adopted those tax increases yet. I mean, obviously, anything could change.
Right, right, thanks.
I've heard some rumors that one town may change theirs.
Well, yeah, and, and again, I know...
It's kind of like the COLA situation. We always wait till the last minute somebody pops an additional amount of money on COLA.
That's exactly right.
We've got to do what's best for the town of Nagseth, not what's best for competitiveness of the, the...
Yes, yeah.
At, at some point, and as long as we can maintain what we need to maintain, maybe next year you look at another penny, or two years down the road, like you mentioned before, you look at another penny. But at this point, um, you, you can't go that far behind. It, it's kind of like if, if, uh, hate to bring your work up, but if Tortugas started buying tuna at twenty-five dollars a pound, and you didn't raise your sandwich...
Right, you said, "I'll make it up next year."
I'll make that up next year. But, I mean, you've got to stay on top of those things and change it a, as it's needed to be changed. And that's with, with this. If we get behind too far, then you're not going to be able to make it up.
Yep, so...
And the, I like thinking, too, is our budget is almost nine million less this year, or thereabouts. So we have cut in, we're trimming as much as we can, and we're still coming up short.
Yeah, yeah.
If, if our budget was up nine million, I could see people having different questions, but it's not.
Yeah, yeah, we've been very prudent, I think, about our pace of projects. Trying, again, trying to be aware. We know people are, we know people are being hit with, you know, the same kind of escalating costs that the town's being hit with, and, um, but again, we have to do our business. Do we need, I think we should probably put this to a vote.
Well, I mean, I, it's a workshop.
Yeah. Well, and we're going to vote on it in terms of budget. I mean, it, we have the consensus, so let's, let's just put it in the budget, and then we vote on it when the, if we approve the budget.
And then I, I guess one more question would be back to this slide. You know, in terms of what we do with the money, do you have any specific preferences for how to allocate the additional one point two cents? I mean, we, we suggested maybe applying some of it to our beach nourishment tax rate, or using it to basically not have a fund balance appropriation. We could do a mixture of the two, um, you know. No.
I, I would like a mixture of the two, frankly. I, I would, I, I don't like the allocation for the fund balance, and, and I, um, you know, if we know that we're going to go up on taxes for beach nourishment next year, let's go ahead and help people out a little bit.
Well, so right now, I think the, um, okay, never mind, yeah, we, we had included one and a half cent for beach nourishment, for the townwide beach nourishment. So if we brought that up to two, uh, that would be an additional half cent. So then we could simply use the remainder to reduce the fund balance appropriation. So that would be fine. I think, I think that would bring the fund balance appropriation down to like one fifty or something. If, if we took...
We would generate like six hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue with the one point, extra one point two cents.
Right.
And so the half of a cent would be two hundred and fifty thousand.
And so then we could, we could reduce the, um, reduce the fund bal...
To like fifty thousand.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Three fifty plus two fifty.
Plus two ninety.
Yeah, that does the math. So approximately, round numbers.
Yep.
Which would be great, because that would help us make up for that, um, loss that we're, you know, the budgets were full, so that would, that will help us for, for this fiscal year, for this audit.
So then, okay, taking the townwide beach nourishment rate to two cent, and then using the remainder to reduce the fund balance appropriation and our tax rate, we would include in the budget overall, would be twenty-three point two cents. I'm just sort of restating what I thought I just heard.
Yeah, one more time.
So we, right now, we're recommending twenty, we recommended twenty-two cent for the tax rate in the, in the recommended budget.
Right.
We would bring that to twenty-three point two cent.
Right.
But we would take a half penny and, and dedicate it to beach nourishment, bringing that from one point five cent to two cent.
Right.
And then we would use, um, the other half cent to reduce the fund balance appropriation, or the, the other, uh, point seven cents, because it was one point two.
And that also reduces the shortfall in the shared revenue.
Correct.
To a hundred thousand?
Actually, that, that would, that would...
It races the entire.
That would, we think it would get us what we projected originally in our financial plan, the ten point six million.
Everybody okay with that? Yeah?
Very good, thank you. So then, I guess, just any other questions or discussion? That was the main thing that we needed feedback on.
No, I don't think so. Was there anything else that you recall in the legislative update that was relevant to, to future expenditures?
No, not at this point. You know, um, we've been providing them with the information they've asked for, and they're, they're trying to, um...
I know, I know they're being really aggressive about the water line replacement, which I appreciate. They, I don't, based on the questions they're asking, it sounds like headway, but, but again, that comes down to whether the legislature's going to, you know, allocate much of anything to, to local projects.
Hopefully, we know more in another month.
Oh, I do need to tell the board, and I should have sent you an email, but it was a, it was a busy week. So I, I think when we were here last, I told you that the mayor's had a meeting set up with the sponsors of seven sixty-five, which was the big omnibus zoning bill. Well, at the last minute, about an hour before that meeting, they canceled the, that, uh, meeting.
The Zoom meeting?
They, they just canceled the Zoom meeting.
Okay.
The sponsors canceled the Zoom meeting. The primary sponsor... The primary sponsor said that they had a conflict. The secondary sponsor said, well, I can't speak for the primary sponsor, so there's no point in my being at the meeting because I can't make any commitments for how the bill might change or not change. And it also emerged from the content of a voicemail that seven sixty-five was being rewritten anyway. So even if by the primary sponsor and so even if the secondary sponsors had been on the call, they wouldn't have known what they were talking about because it was being rewritten. And then we've since been advised that it looks like seven sixty-five in its current, in the form that we all saw it, that seemed to be destined for passage, may be dead because it was, became so toxic. There was so much opposition to it. So now the concern is that pieces of it will get added to the budget like they have in the past. So our folks in Riley are having to watch that very closely to make sure that no, none of those little pieces get pulled out and stuck into, into hidden places. We also had an in-person meeting scheduled for this coming Monday with Senate. No, 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 that was, yes, this coming, this coming week with Senate leadership. That got canceled because they decided not to do any business during the week of Memorial Day. So both houses took off, made no commitments and so, so all, all the meetings went away. But, you know, I talked to all the mayors about it and, you know, while we were disappointed, we also felt pretty good about being prepared and having, you know, made our voices heard and, and we were going to go into that, that meeting very prepared for them, to make their points. If we still need to, we'll re, we'll schedule other meetings and we'll, we'll continue. That's off topic, but I just wanted to update y'all to clear all that was. Well, if there's no other business to be discussed, then we can be adjourned. Okay, motion, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.